Now I guess I'm on. Here I go. Apologize for being late a few seconds here. We had some microphone issues we had to deal with, and hopefully we've got it straightened out now so everybody can hear what's going to be said here in the near term. We have an agenda that we follow, and I just want to point out to folks that we've got the consent agenda is most of the front page of the agenda, and that's one vote after we read it. So we will be moving through this agenda relatively fast with the idea that we want to get down to the swearing ends of the new leaders in the fire department. So we'll hopefully have that done here fairly quick. So I just want everybody to, I know a lot of you are standing up and whatever, and hopefully we'll get you out of here in a few minutes. So it asks that you all please rise for a brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as we gather for our regular meeting of the Batavia City Council, we are ever mindful of how blessed we have become in this community with the outstanding public services that we receive from all of our city departments. Tonight, we are focusing on the Batavia Fire Department, which last year responded to a record number of over 5,000 separate calls, a number we've never dealt with before, but it speaks to the demands upon our department and the quality of good work that that department has recognized and honored to do. Tonight, we also want to say a word of thanks for them and bless them and ask that they continue with the good program that is now well underway. Also tonight, we want to remember those from our community who are serving in foreign soil in defense of the liberties in the United States of America, and we just ask that a special blessing be given to each of these men and women as they go about their vital missions. Tonight, as always, we ask for vision and understanding and degree of study by the members of the city council as they act on the items of business before them, knowing that in each one of them, we have individuals whose hearts and minds are always in the best interest of the city of Batavia. And finally, we ask that a special blessing be showered upon all of our residents who may be sick or infirm, and that they will return to good health in the days ahead. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman Wolf, you lead us in Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance, yours good by the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Barazza?
Here.
Lancy?
Here.
Beck, absent.
Here.
I'm sorry, Beck is here online. Peeper?
Here.
Chanzet?
Absent.
Wolf?
Here.
Sulfah?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malay?
Here.
Euer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
Vocal singer?
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Very good. I would note that the, well, the reminder that we're going to ask everyone that's going to speak tonight to please find a microphone to speak on so that when we record it on BATV, it can be heard by those watching on TV. And secondly, we ask, are there any items tonight to be removed, added, or changed on the agenda? I would like to submit to the city council that at the end of the meeting, we need to amend the agenda for a brief executive session to discuss the purchase of property. So, do we want a motion on that?
Yes.
Would somebody care to make that into a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Motion and second for that. Call the roll.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Very good. The person that does the consent agenda is not here, both of them.
Abby's online.
Abby's online. She can read it.
She is?
Yes.
Abby, do you have the agenda? Do you can read it for the consent agenda?
I can, Your Honor. The consent agenda reads as follows: To accept and place on file the Committee of the Whole minutes for June 11th, 2024, the Plant Commission minutes for June 5th, 2024, and historic preservation minutes for March 25th, 2024, and for approval, the June 21st, 2024 payroll in the amount of $1,018,391.16, the accounts payable check register in the amount of $5,406,761.13, city council minutes for June 17th, 2024, Resolution 2024-94-R authorizing execution of a notice of award for the 2023-2024 lead and galvanized steel service line replacement project to Five Star Energy Services LLC, Resolution 2024-95-R approving a contract with electric conduit construction to perform 15-kilovolt underground circuit installation at 2349 Main Street, Ordnance 2024-48 conditional use for motor vehicle sales and leasing, new and used, Internet-based in the G.I. General Industrial District, Ordnance 2024-49 conditional use for towing services established in the G.I. General Industrial District, and for approval, city council executive session minutes for June 3rd, 2024, purchase of real estate, city council executive session minutes for June 17th, 2024, personnel, and the EPA MOA for Kane County Coalition. Your Honor, I would move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Move by Alderman Beck, second by Sulfah for the approval of the consent agenda that's presented. Any discussion? Kirk, please call the roll.
Beck?
Aye.
Beck?
Thank you.
Peeper?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Absent.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Very good. Motion's approved. Okay, moving to item number seven, matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. Does we have anybody tonight that wants to address? If you'd come forward and use the microphone, please, and tell us your name for the record.
My name is Jean Stone. I'm here on behalf of the Congregational Church of Batavia. The Congregational Church of Batavia offers a monthly legal clinic that should be of help to your constituents who need legal guidance and support. This clinic is offered through Administered Justice, which is a Christian legal organization whose mission is to help vulnerable neighbors get legal help. Over 40 million low-income Americans are unable to access legal services each year. Ninety-two percent of their legal concerns are not addressed completely. The Administered Justice Organization establishes gospel justice centers in local churches around the country. Our church received training and began operating its center in April of 2021, and since then, we've served nearly 100 clients. It's important to note that clients do not have to be Christians or church members to access these services, nor do they have to be Batavia residents. Clients come to us with a variety of legal concerns: eviction, divorce, child custody, child support, credit, debt problems, estate planning, immigration, and more. It's important to note that the clinic does not offer legal representation, only a consultation. Here's how the process works. A person with a legal problem calls the Administered Justice Center in Elgin. Based on their needs, the center will enter their information into a database, schedule an appointment for them with the next clinic, and collect a $30 fee. This fee helps ensure that clients show up for their appointments. During the appointment, the client has a 45-minute consultation with an attorney who hears their concern and provides a concrete set of next steps that they can take to resolve their problem. If the counseling attorney believes that legal representation is necessary, the client will be referred to sources for securing those services. After the appointment, the client meets with another member of our team who reviews what the attorney has said and makes sure that the client understands what needs to be done. A month later, someone from our team follows up to find out whether the client actually completed those steps. The follow-up is important for encouraging the client to take the necessary action. Our clinic is offered on the second Tuesday of every month at 5:30 PM. We currently have the capacity to serve six clients each month. If a client needs a consultation at a different time or different location, the Administered Justice Office will help them get an appointment at one of the other centers in our area. If a client completes the prescribed actions but still needs help with the same concern, they can schedule another appointment at no additional cost. You might be wondering why our church offers this service. We staff the clinic entirely with volunteers and receive no income from seeing clients. Our church has a strong justice ministry directed at reducing the institutional sources of suffering. I will tell you that personally, this is one of the most rewarding ministries I've ever been involved with. We should see the relief on the faces of our clients and hear it in their voices when they leave. They finally have hope that their legal problem will be solved. I have flyers and information that I've left over on the table for you, both in English and Spanish. Thank you for your time and attention, and thank you for your service to our community.
On behalf of the city council, I'd like to thank you for coming down and sharing this, and it's a piece of news that, you know, now a lot of people are aware of, and we need to spread the word. So certainly, the city will be more than willing to help you get the word out about what you're doing because you really are doing a noble service for some folks that may seriously need it. So thank you for stepping forward and doing something really good for Batavia. Thank you. Anybody else in the audience this evening for something that's not on the agenda? Well, we're going to do the swearing in of the battalion chief and the lieutenant now, and when we do that, I will predict that this room will clear out. So Chief Hanson, do you want to make some introductory remarks?
Yes, very good, Mayor. Good evening, council, staff, public, obviously esteemed members of the Batavia Fire Department and others from the fire service, and our candidates' family. Thank you for coming this evening. It's an exciting evening, and I'm privileged and honored to present these gentlemen for promotions. These gentlemen have gone through a promotional process. We had 11 total candidates who went through a six-month process in order to achieve these promotions and advancements in rank. They were conducted by the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners. I wish to thank Nancy Vance, the chairman, Dennis Anderson, one of the commissioners, and Randy Zeiss for all their time and dedication that was put into this. They went through, like I said, a five-step process to achieve these positions on the eligibility list, and I'm honored to present them tonight for the swearing in. Our first candidate, Casey Balcedos. Casey joined our fire department in June 2004. He's here with his family. Come on down.
You want to bring the family to?
Bring the whole family. Casey was promoted to lieutenant in 2015. Casey serves in another borough of capacities within the department. He has been a strong contributor for many years, has worked hard, and through his dedicated service, has earned the right to be promoted to battalion chief to fill the seat of retired battalion chief Sean Stevens, who retired a couple months ago. Casey has been acting in that role for the last two weeks, and as of tonight, will move up to the official position of battalion chief. And I have, his wife will pin the badge on after the mayor gives the oath, and we do have, of course, the most important thing, the helmet to protect all that knowledge that he's getting.
So Chief, I'll start that term now. If you'd raise your right hand and repeat after me, I state your name.
I, Casey Balcedos.
Having been appointed?
Having been appointed.
To the position of battalion chief?
To the position of battalion chief.
With the Batavia Fire Department?
With the Batavia Fire Department.
In the city of Batavia?
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage?
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States?
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties?
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
For the position of battalion chief?
Position of battalion chief.
With the Batavia Fire Department?
With the Batavia Fire Department.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. If you want to go to the back of the room, and you got to sign each one of those documents, and give them back to the chief.
Yeah, now, if your wife pinned the badge on, now you're official. So, great. Good luck tonight. And then Casey, if you were to introduce your family?
Sure, yes.
I appreciate that. You got nervous, right? Brand-new badges are very stiff. We have fun with them. Nice job.
Just like to say thank you very much, everybody, for coming. It's been an honor and a privilege serving with the department for 20 years now, training and learning from everybody. A lot of people who have been here since well before I started are here tonight, and I appreciate that. It's changed my entire life. This is Emily Zeiss, my beautiful wife, my son Max, my son Calvin, my son Zane, and my daughter Evelyn, and they're all here tonight to support me. I appreciate everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you, yes. Our next candidate, now that we've now promoted Casey Balcedos to battalion chief, we have an opening now in lieutenant, obviously, and fortunately, we have a candidate to fill that position. So Rich McDonald, if you'll come on down, I'll give you a little information about Rich and his family's here. Also, we'll join him. So Rich joined as a paid-on call in 2013, and through his hard work and dedication, was able to achieve a full-time position with the Batavia Fire Department in 2015. A little bit of the irony with Rich is he actually got hired in when Casey made lieutenant, so a little bit of follow there, but we'll see what the future holds as we move forward. So nobody wants to hear the chief speak, so we're going to move forward with it, and we have helmet for his son, also a helmet. Looking good.
Looks good, bud.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
All right, very good. Rich, if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me, I state your name?
I, Rich McDonald.
Having been appointed?
Having been appointed.
To the position of lieutenant?
To the position of lieutenant.
With the Batavia Fire Department?
With the Batavia Fire Department.
In the city of Batavia?
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage?
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
The position of lieutenant?
Of the position of lieutenant.
With the Batavia Fire Department?
With the Batavia Fire Department.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and Liam also gave him his shirt badge. Appreciate you. You going to keep the helmet? I'm going to let you do it. Rich, if you would introduce your family, please, and if you have any comments?
Yep. This is my wife, Jamie, and my son, Liam. I want to thank everyone, present, past, and mentors of mine for coming out tonight. It means a lot to me. Learned so much from every one of you, and thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mayor and council. Thank you all for attending. If you'd like, I know that there's a little celebration afterwards, and I think council won't mind if they wait a couple of minutes. We'll allow Casey and Rich and the family to get out first if you want to congratulate them as they go out, which we appreciate. Thank you all for coming. Thank you for your support. Thank you to all, especially Casey and Rich, for all their hard work and dedication, and to the members of the Batavia Fire Department. We appreciate it every day, and we thank you. Thanks for taking time out of your day today. Yay! All right. All right, thank you for your patience, Mayor. I guess just for the council, they've already heard this, but it was a five-step process. They went through an oral interview. They went through an assessment center, which is job-related. It included scenarios of potential fire calls of different varieties. They also went through what's called an ascertain merit from their past performances and history, in addition to what's called PPR, which are preference points that are provided from their peers, peer preference points, that also rates them, and finally, a final interview with the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners. So it's a five-step process. The test alone is out of reading materials of five different books from different aspects of the fire service. It's a hundred-question test, and it actually takes about six months to study for. So they've put a lot of time and dedication in that, and as the mayor said, in addition to 5,000 calls and other demands. So it was quite the accomplishment, and I'd like to thank, you know, all 11 members who took part in that. Lists are good for three years. There hopefully be additional promotions. This now, unfortunately, opens up a total of four vacancies on the fire department, which we're also working to fill, and it's a challenging, it's been a challenge to actually hire firefighters, as it has been the police department, which I know you're all aware of and involved, but we appreciate your support, and we thank you for that every day. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chief.
Good times.
Okay, we will return to the meeting at hand, and we'll go to item number 10, which is reappointment of Tom LaLonde and Tom Goslin to be members of the Batavia Plant Commission for a three-year term expiring June 1st of 2027. If somebody saw move?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Who by who? Second by who?
Sulfah.
Sulfah? Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Absent.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Vocal singer, absent. Twelve present, or twelve ayes, two absent.
Very good. Motion's approved. Moving then to item 11, which is Resolution 2024-009-R authorizing the city administrator to award grants for FUD recovery, and I know Laura's here to give us a little background on this.
Yes. On Saturday, June 22nd night, we had a very significant rain event here. The destruction of the trees that you can see around town, I think I've heard wood chippers in my neighborhood for every day for the last week. Unfortunately, that storm did significant damage to three businesses which are located on Flynn Street. There's the Step Above Dance Academy, Grainology Brew Stillery, and also Major Medical. And here in Batavia, we want to support our businesses, and as small business owners, these things are very hard to recover from. Even if you have insurance, there are impacts financially that are not covered by insurance, and then the process moves slowly as well. And so to help our businesses, I'm recommending $10,000 grants to each one of those businesses. The state has sufficient resources in both DECA funds. DECA was a microloan program that was 15 years ago happened, and the state, when the program ended, said you may use those funds how you wish, and thus far, we have utilized those funds to support our business community. Also, you decided that you wanted to designate $200,000 of our ARPA funds in support of our local businesses, and what we did there was decided to apply all the remaining ARPA funding to Carriage Crest, but to designate general fund monies that would have been used for the Carriage Crest project, to dedicate those to assist businesses, in particular recovering from the COVID. But then also, we could also just use TIF III funds because these businesses are located within TIF III, and TIF III has a healthy enough fund balance that it could also support grants of this kind. And so I'm requesting that these grants be approved for these businesses. Thank you very much.
Any questions, Laura?
You know, in the memo that you sent out, you also described that these possibly would be covered under insurance or through the contractor working in the area. Do we think that doing a grant, or do we have any question about doing a grant, whether that would affect the insurance recovery or any of the money from that side of it, contractor-wise or anything, or is this just to try to be something over and above that?
This would be something over and above that. We would not seek any reimbursement in the event that they receive proceeds from an insurance policy, whether their own or someone else's.
Other questions? I would highly recommend we do this because that was totally unplanned event, and there may have been some impacts by all the work that was going on down there right next to it by the work at the wastewater treatment plant, and so things weren't normal there to begin with, and so it was kind of a city situation. Anybody else? Alderman?
A question, just because these 100-year storms tend to keep coming. Is there a way to kind of determine where we draw the line where we don't? Because obviously, every national event, we can't give money out.
Yes, and we do have areas of our city that we know are prone to flooding, but it is a rarity, I would say, Gary, a rarity that it affects our downtown businesses. It's a very unique circumstance, and also, given that there's the construction work adjacent to it as well, which means this site doesn't look like it has looked in the past. There are some changes to it. So investigation of exactly what the sources are is ongoing.
Got you. Thank you.
Yes, Alderman Lehman?
If we had another significant rain event in the next couple of weeks or months, is this going to repeat itself in those businesses, since some of it seems to maybe be connected to the contract work?
We think that the contractor has taken measures to prevent that from happening. Once they were notified of it, they made some changes to the topography over there that we hope will prevent that from happening. Alderman Baron?
I'm just curious, because you mentioned three different funds. How much is still left? Like, are you, what are you looking at taking from, you know, or is it first you're going to try and use up this defunct fund?
Yes, I think that that would probably be a best first source for this because that can go ahead and use that for anything that you wanted to at this point. The ARPA funds, we had said we wanted to use that to support businesses in who are recovering from COVID, you know, so this would be a little bit of a stretch for that. And then our TIF III funding, by not dipping into TIF III, we preserve the ability to utilize those funds to promote development within TIF III, which is really why it was set up in the first place, or to address our own infrastructure issues within TIF III.
And are the sizes of the businesses pretty similar in size? Like, as far as square footage?
Granology Brew Stillery is significantly larger than the other two businesses. But the floor of the Dance Academy is a specialized floor, and it was, it will be very, very expensive for her to replace that floor, and it is completely destroyed. And the Major Medical, while they are a very small footprint, they lost many of their sample pieces, and so those are very expensive pieces of equipment as well.
Other questions? Do you have a motion in second?
All moved.
Second? Second by Soffa? Soffa?
Motion by Soffa.
Motion by Soffa, second by?
Malay.
Malay.
Soffa.
Aye.
Baron? Aye. Lehman? Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Barazza? Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
13 yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved. All right, moving to item number 12. We have Margaret Perot, the President and Chief Executive Officer of the Chamber here tonight. Thank you for coming, and I turn it over to you for your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. Thank you always for your collaboration with the Chamber. I appreciate us all working together to build a vibrant and prosperous community. First of all, I want to extend a warm welcome to the businesses that joined the Chamber this month. We're delighted to have Goldfish Swim School St. Charles, The Eventful Experience, Swipe Right Matchmakers, CD One Price Cleaners, Reds Garage, and Stage Batavia as part of our growing Chamber community. If you want to find out more about these businesses, please go to the Chamber's online directory. I want to tell you to, I want to ask you to mark your calendar for the Chamber's upcoming wonderful events. This Wednesday, we have our Not-for-Profit Forum, where we have about 20 to 25 not-for-profit organizations get together to compare notes and assist each other. On Wednesday, July 10th, we have our Coffee and Commerce. It will be held at DS Studios and Photo Lab. On Thursday, July 11th, at 11:30, we will have our webinar, "The Upside of Down: Turning Negative Comments Into Positive Outcomes." So that's a no-charge webinar that anybody can sign up for on our website that'll assist people dealing with negative comments on social media. We could all use help with that. Come visit us, come visit the Chamber at Windmill City Fest. We'll be serving the beer on Friday night at the Beer Tent. We have a networking event at Brother Tim Brewing. I think you guys know where that is, or you've heard of it. It is Wednesday, July 17th, at 4:30. We will be spotlighting Anderson Humane. They may bring an animal to the event, so please join us. We have a ribbon cutting for Long Branch Tree Services. Hopefully, we had to postpone it once because of terrible rainstorms, and they had to use their bucket trucks to be out there cleaning up. But right now, it's scheduled for Thursday, July 18th, at 9:30 a.m. I'm proud to announce that our Grow Your Business Scholarship program has just produced four more graduates. Hearth and Hammer, Black Cactus, Garage 31, and Boji Bikes have made it through the program. They each received $10,000 worth of consultation from the Chamber's program, with two of the scholarships subsidized by the City of Batavia. We will soon kick off our fourth year of the successful Grow Your Business Scholarship program in partnership with the Fox Valley Entrepreneurship Center. If you notice a business that could benefit from expert advice to reach its full potential, let them know about our Grow Your Business Scholarship Program. We're going to be opening up the application soon, so be on the lookout. Before I introduce my esteemed guest, does anybody have any questions for me? Great, thank you for your attention. I'm excited to introduce a valued member of the Batavia Chamber, Richard Clark, the owner of Area Code Audio. With over 15 years of experience crafting captivating podcasts, Richard has forged meaningful connections with our community. He has generously donated his time to educate businesses on how to launch a podcast for their organization, for the Chamber. His recent work focuses on the Batavia community, exploring what it means to experience community and belonging through one-on-one conversations with local small business owners. His latest podcast discusses the many flags in our community and how they bring us together. By the way, the Batavia Community Flag is available for purchase online at bataviatamer.org, and you can pick it up at the Chamber office. Please help me in welcoming Richard Clark to tell us more about his wonderful business. In the meantime, I'm going to pass out a QR code, so you could scan it to sign up for his podcast and learn what he's doing and how special Batavia is.
Thanks so much. That was a great introduction. Stole a lot of my thunder, I think, but I have a little bit more to say. My name is Richard Clark. I'm the owner of Area Code Audio and the host and producer of the podcast, Area Code Batavia. Thank you, Margaret, from and the Chamber of Commerce for inviting me to speak here about the podcast, about Area Code Audio, and how we're serving Batavia. I moved to the Midwest about nine years ago, and Batavia about six years ago. We always move, that's easy to remember, because we always move when we have a child. So I always count by how old our children are. I've been making podcasts for more than 15 years, making them professionally with clients for about eight years. And after doing that for a while, I started Area Code Audio in August of last year. Here in Batavia, the Chamber of Commerce was super helpful through that whole process, helped me make connections and sort of find my footing during that time. We are a podcast consulting and production agency. We work with businesses, organizations, and individuals to help them connect more deeply with their audiences through audio. We started Area Code Batavia sort of as a side project in February with an episode actually about limestone coffee. It was meant to be a podcast about what it meant to belong in Batavia. It came really from a personal experience of just my own sort of infatuation, I guess you would say, with Batavia. I was found it just to be a really unique and interesting place. And so I wanted to sort of explore that. It's a long-form interview show where I talk to people, the people who shape and impact Batavia, and this has been mostly downtown business owners so far, outside of this month, where we've talked to a lot of people related to flags and just about that sort of thing. So we are looking to expand that into other realms. We're really just trying to showcase sort of the diversity of people in Batavia and the people who shape Batavia. It is for longtime Batavians. It's a podcast for longtime Batavians, but honestly, when I made the podcast, I had in mind people like me, people who are relatively new to the community and might have a hard time just by nature of what it is, sort of integrating into the community. And so I felt that a first, a good first start would be getting to know the people that you see every day, the people that you know of but don't actually know. And so, you know, I tried to do that through Facebook and social media. I found that that's not a great way to do that. And so I decided to use my experience in journalism and podcasting and interviewing and apply it to this situation. So we've interviewed people like Fultos, the Boardwalk Shop owners, Hearth and Hammer. We've interviewed owners of these businesses. We've seen a lot of success. We've been really happy with how that's gone. We've had, over the time that it's been out, we've seen over 1,400 unique listeners, 400-plus downloads a month typically. We're starting to acquire sponsors, which is really nice. And we are, yeah, one of the things we're trying to do with sponsorships is really just provide a range of options for a range of businesses. I feel like a lot of businesses don't have like a great selection of marketing options, and so we're trying to provide things that are unique and really good opportunities, I think valuable opportunities, for people who are looking to reach Batavians who are invested in the community. That really is our audience. We've also done a live show at Sturdy Shelter, which was really fun. And so we're trying a lot of stuff. We're getting really invested and involved in the community. But I think the thing that's made me really happy, that makes me feel like we're succeeding, is hearing from people who have listened to the podcast and told me that they feel like they're more of a part of Batavia, like they belong more to Batavia, and that they're more invested in Batavia than they were before. So if you want to find out more about Area Code Audio or Area Code Batavia, you can go to areacodebatavia.com and find more. I'm obviously open to any of you if you have feedback or suggestions, how we can become more representative and integrated into the community. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Yes.
Are the podcasts available on the website or on like the podcast app?
Yes, they're available wherever you get your podcasts, as they say.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yes.
Positive feedback from newly arrived residents in Batavia who have learned of your program.
Oh, nice.
And have said that they've, just as you are seeking to do, that you've given them some kind of inside insights into what Batavia's all about, and the diversity that historically existed here, and, you know, the great support of the public school system and building the Riverwalk. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that people said they moved in here, they didn't realize there are all these neat things that happened here. So I appreciate you helping us spread the word, because we really do have a very positive story to tell. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Alderman Johnson?
Just wanted to say I feel really invested in the community after listening to your podcast.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Yes.
One more. Do you think you will do a live show again? Was that successful?
Yes. I want to do a live show. It was successful. It was fun. It was a stressful week leading up to it. And so that's the part where it's like, it's like having a baby, like, I want to do that again, but I got to forget all the details first. So all right. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
You're doing, you're really making a positive difference in Batavia, so thank you very much. All right, we'll go to the Administrator's Report.
Well, first, I would like to congratulate Margaret Perot, in addition to being the President and CEO of our wonderful Chamber of Commerce. Margaret has just begun a year of being President of the Batavia Rotary Club, and I know she'll be hugely successful in that, as she is with all her other endeavors. So congratulations, Margaret.
You're welcome. Just a few matters to update, and then I wanted to show folks online a resource that we have available on our website, some pretty cool city maps that we have available to you, all kinds of information available in those. But first, just a little bit of news. The paving on South Water Street has been completed. We are getting ready to get our 2024 roadway and sidewalk programs underway. That's another reason I wanted to show you the maps, because it's very easy for you to check and see if your street and your sidewalk might be included in that work. And then also, just letting people know, now that we have purchased 916 First Street to be the new home of the Batavia Interfaith Food Pantry and Clothes Closet, that we will begin now several months' worth of renovations work to make that perfectly appropriate home for them. And we expect that we're going to move them in later this year. And of course, we will host a big community celebration of the new permanent home for Batavia Food Pantry and Clothes Closet. Oh, and I wanted to show you the maps. So from our homepage, there is just a very easy little button that you can hit down here for city maps, and there are quite a few of them. One is for our capital improvements. This was working so well before, yes. And you can find an address or a place where those are going on. And then, here you go. Oops, sorry. I went too fast. A legend will come up, which will show you by the different colors what type of capital projects, and that would be our streets program, our crack fill program, which is something that we do to extend the life of our streets, so that we don't have to replace them every 20 years. By doing crack fill, we end up extending the life of our roads to 40 years. All you need to do is just kind of zoom in and wait for the picture to catch up to you, and you'll be able to see, based upon the colors that you see on the screen, the different types of projects that are being done. So for instance, that's a street project, that's a sidewalk project, and you can see numerous crack fill projects throughout the city. Another great map is our Development Projects map. This will show you like a top 10 of different projects that are happening here in the city. You can go to, this one would be the Ashton Ridge project that was recently approved. And then there are also additional information that's available, documents that were shown at the City Council meeting approving the project, as well as elevations to show what those look like. Number two is the Cube Smart and Tesla project that we have going on. You can just click through and see, that's the medical resort that's out on Main Street. Earth Mover Credit Union, which is going in behind the Starbucks and Chipotle and Bell Tire. This is an expansion over at the Aldi headquarters. Got the Dave's Hot Chicken that's going in at Jewel, the Batavia Logistics Center at the corner of Kirk and Fabian. Guazio Orthodontics is pretty much completed. That's a beautiful building over there on Welson Street. Let's check out some other maps. You can check out our City of Batavia Public Art, and when you click on it, it gives you a little information about those pieces of art, what our Batavia refuse to recycling collection schedules are, something else that people would be interested in knowing, and if you have an issue and you want to reach out to your alderman, it shows based on, you know, where your address is, it will tell you which ward in which you reside, and who your represented officials, representatives are. And then also, we have our Historic District and our Tax Increment, Financing Districts, and then the ever-elusive Parking in Downtown Batavia. So this gives you a map to tell you where spaces are available, and then also, this legend over here lets you know if there are any restrictions on the duration. So I like to, from time to time, let people know that those maps are there and contain a lot of useful information for them. So, and that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Questions, Laura?
I just have one question. So Wednesday, the music.
So Wednesday, the music for the Park District.
Yes.
They don't have fencing up this year. Is that kind of working as a Dora-type of area because they sell the alcohol there?
On the one hand, I would say yes, but I think that the Dora, you would expect that people would bring in alcohol from other places, and that isn't allowed there. So the Park District only allows beverages that are purchased on-site, is my understanding.
Okay. And then, is there like a certain area that that should be restricted to? And is that with the licensing they have, is there a requirement for signage to be able to show that?
There isn't. It's restricted to the Pegbon Center area, but they have not, up to this point, been required to put up signage.
Okay. And why would that be?
It was, I think that City Council gave the direction to staff last year to let them serve alcohol without a fence up. But we certainly could change it to require it to be marked "No alcohol beyond this point." I'm sure that they would be willing to do that.
As I know, on River Street, you know, we require those businesses to do that. And I just, I don't know, just to kind of stay consistent with what is going on. I mean, it's a lovely time down there, but I think that, I don't think we want to send the message that you can walk all over the Riverwalk. You know, if people don't know where to stop.
Okay.
From that, I don't know.
Sure. Great idea.
Any questions? Thank you, Alderman, for pointing that out. That is a very concerning issue, so. You gotta treat everybody to the same in that game, and... Anybody else? All right, we have other business from the council? Alderman Chansett?
As I had telegraphed a few, a few weeks ago, I had some important things to think about, and I guess if you'd humor me for just a moment, I'd like to read the letter that I'm saying.
I understand what you're saying.
I'd like to read you my resignation letter. I think I'd like to share it real briefly with the council.
You know my feelings about it, so.
I know. You'd like a, you'd like a paper copy of it, you don't read the electronic ones. I know. I guess I'd like to say this, and I want the council to hear this, too, that serving on the council has been a remarkable journey of personal growth and fulfillment that I am always going to cherish. And it is with a great sadness that I do have to announce my departure at the end of this meeting, which I barely made it to on time. If you're going to pay me for it, I want to make sure the money goes to the food pantry. It's been an honor to contribute to the well-being of this community, and I've enjoyed serving my neighbors, representing their interest in lobbying on their behalf. I'm proud of the things that we accomplished during the last 14 years, and I appreciate your appointment back in May of 2010. Your creative interpretation of advice and consent that puts the decision in the hands of the council for the vetting of potential appointees has produced a long history of committed individuals who have contributed to the diverse makeup of this organization. And while I was disappointed that I wasn't selected to fill Linnea's seat, I won't forget the phone call you made the next morning to say that you had another seat open, because Kathy had resigned that same evening, and we had two vacancies in the third ward during the same month. I'm grateful for having an opportunity to work alongside you, and whether you recognize it or not, being the 11th longest-serving mayor is kind of a big deal, makes you a kind of a big deal. And the mentorship that you've shown, the tools that you provided, have given me courtside seats to view this intricate machine that you operate. There's never been any pressure to legislate or to govern, and it's always been an open process to participate in the decision-making process in whatever capacity we want to in decisions that do shape the future of our city. You've trusted me during the years to even help with your reelection, although you don't need anyone's help winning an election. You've handed me assignments over the years and asked me to work on projects, and we've all delivered votes to you on initiatives that were important to your administration, which have been a minefield, especially as the last couple of years with controversies sometimes that are politically murky. I look back on some of those decisions, and I guess I'll take responsibility for killing Campana by delaying the vote by a week. I might take a little bit of credit for what's happening over at Batavia Avenue and Fabian by getting Chris Lawson and constituents together to talk about the right-of-way. But Campana did finally give up and is making that project possible, and I appreciate your leadership and seeing that project through. I will also take some responsibility for fueling. The fires have helped lead to the hoisting of the unity flag that we have outside. It is a beacon of hope for kids that are out there. I would encourage you or any other future mayor to consider raising that flag permanently and become the first person to do it. Nobody ever recalls the second person who did it, they celebrate the first person that does it. I'll take some credit for carrying the pail of water for the Crestview flooding situation or solution across the finish line, but it ultimately was your administration and your staff that helped finish that plan, that are keeping basements dry. More than 80 residents there are sleeping better because of that. I guess, and by saying that, the last four years of my personal life, professional life have been the most rewarding, I found my voice, and I've used it to lobby in Springfield on issues that face municipalities. I use that voice to negotiate business deals. I use that voice on behalf of people who can't speak, people who are marginalized, people that succumb to the shame of understanding who they are, and people that just don't feel like they have a seat at this table. You can hear it yourself, that voice. Out of all things, this, this week's episode of Area Code Batavia, the podcast, I can tell you now that I'm sorry that I didn't bring my spouse with me to your holiday party. His name was John, and he had a really good sense of humor, and I think you would have You've also done something more important, which is to build a community here, and you've attracted a really diverse population to your town. You've prepared the next generation to hold a gavel and hit the ground running when you decide that it's your turn to step down. And I guess I would say that, for someone who's not been in the seat that I'm in right now and doesn't understand why this is important and you would even verbalize, it's like an author with a book, I guess a writer would understand this, and not knowing how it ends, you just have to keep writing because you don't, you just don't know where it ends. The answer is that the next chapter is always blank. It's not our sole responsibility to decide what is written on the next pages. I was elected for the last four elections with just 8% of registered voters, in my word. It means that 92% of the people out there don't even realize that we're writing a book up here, or that the real power for them is in the apathy that they need to overcome. My guess is that the next person to pick up that next chapter will be people like Martin, the gentleman that approached this dais a couple of months ago with the ceasefire proclamation. It's people like, like them who will have the courage and sit down at that typewriter and begin writing that next chapter. And I guess only the future will tell us which ideas are forthcoming and what dreams are still waiting to come true. Thank you for your mentorship. I appreciate it.
Thank you. As you know, I've shared with you, I'm sorry to lose you, you've been talking to me about this now for some point in time, and we've kind of kept you going here a little bit, but I knew you were under a lot of pressure. The positive part about this is, is that I don't think Alderman Chansett is planning to re-Batavia. He's got some new ideas in the back of his mind, and he'll, I assume you'll be maybe coming down here some night or, and presenting some of these ideas that you have for some developments of things that he would like to do. And it's innovative, I would describe it that way, and you'll, you'll find it very interesting. And I've told him, I said, I, I can't predict how the council's going to react to some of it, but knowing Alderman Chansett, he'll work the crowd and before and after the meeting, and we'll see where it goes. But it's some, I find it very refreshing and innovative thought processes of how we can kind of redevelop Batavia and keep the old, but bring in some new moments of life into the town. So let us hear from you soon about that, and are you anticipating, this is your last meeting, is that what we're saying? With that being said, you know, I have to put the word out then that anybody in the third ward, or, what are you, you're?
Still third.
You're still the third, okay. Anybody in the third ward that wants to, the way we replace an alderman, as you all know, we set a net night, I'll probably do it at the next council meeting, we'll invite anybody from the ward that wants to to come down and meet with the other 13 aldermen. And then you guys collectively as a vote, pick who that person's going to be. So it's truly a decision of the city council as to who gets brought in. I would hope we'd have some interesting folks in the third ward that would want to come up and...
I've met almost all of them, and you have quite a few great candidates to choose from.
Anybody else want to make some comments about Alderman Chansett while he's still an alderman, or do you want to wait and get him when he's back here in his new roles?
Mayor, one of the things that we would like to invite Alderman Chansett to come to the next city council meeting is so that we can, as we have done in other cases, celebrate your service to this community. So if you'll, if you'll join us, we would love for you to return.
Tell me it's a half hour before it is.
The rest of the aldermen here, if you know somebody that lives in the third ward, bend their ear and tell them that we've got a seat open and we need somebody that's interested in a positive future for Batavia to come down and make your application. You only got one campaign appearance, and that's before the 13, the rest of you, and they will make a decision as to who they think would be the best positioned person to fill the whole position.
And the lesson in my candidacy was, even if you don't get it the first time, you might get it the second.
So, again, I think all the council joins with me in thanking you publicly for your watchful eye and your thought-provoking appearances as far as making observations on stuff that was going in different directions, and you were always one that wasn't afraid to speak their mind and tell us what they thought. And 14 years of you has been a very blessed situation for the community of Batavia to have somebody like yourself who's always been here, always wanting to do what was in the best interest of Batavia. So thank you for everything you've done, and you have made a difference for the better in this town, and I just want to acknowledge that. So when you come down in the next meeting, we'll probably have some document that may say that, so anyway. Alderman Chansett?
Real quick, looks like you don't want anyone to say anything, but just, you've had an impact, thanks for all you've done.
I've talked to other mayors in the region other, recently about, and some of them are telling me the worst horror stories about aldermen resigning or retiring or getting mad and firing off, and what a terrible meeting it was when this one finally spoke his mind or her mind and whatever have you. And I think Dan just, what he just did was a very high-profile, very high-class way of submitting his resignation, and I appreciate everything you've done to try to bring that along and create a sentiment about the city council that I think the community can respect.
We, with all due respect, we learned it from watching you. If you remember the night we named this building after you, the man who gave you the accolades was the man who unsuccessfully ran against you in the previous election, saying that he had learned about himself, that, what was it, he learned how to, how to listen.
How to listen.
That should tell you something right there. That we learned it from watching you.
All right, well, again, thank you, and we hope to see you again here real soon, probably out there in those chairs.
And hopefully seven locations in Chicago Lake area.
All right. Any other business from the council? Well, going to 15, the mayor's report, you know, I've kind of focused my observations tonight on Alderman Chansett, but I just wanted to share a couple of pieces of news. When I go into the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning in Chicago, they're telling me they're watching the growth in the region. And there's, there's about 12 pockets in the Chicagoland region that are picking up population, and Batavia, Geneva, and St. Charles collectively is one of those pockets that is really gaining quite a bit of population. And in the case of Batavia, we may be in the leadership of the three towns as far as the number of, case in point, out there on Kirk Road, we have the, I guess we call it the, what, the Batavia Commons, and it's 242 townhouses at Wind Energy and Kirk Road. It's right there by Fermilab and our water tower. And I am told that there's 242 units in there, and the word is that all 242 have now been sold. And I, I don't know what that says yet, but I did some deep digging with our Community Development Department as to, in this decade, how many houses have we built in Batavia? Well, that number is still rolling on, but right now, if, you know, with what we got, Polte out there now going to do the furnace property and already doing their behind Coles there on McKee Street, they told me last week that that first one out there on McKee Street has 163 single-family homes in it, and of that, there's over 90 now that have been contracted. They haven't started to build them yet, they can't build them fast enough, but there's at least 90 that are already gone. And I've had people call here and want to know when this piece at McKee and Van Nortryck's going to start, because they'd like to be in there. And the Community Development Department is working on that one, and it's getting, I think we're coming back to you here pretty quick with the, the final layout of it and how it all is going to look and whatever have you. It appears to me that's going to be another very nice class, high-class development. And so, you know, then we just did the medical resort out at Main and Deer Path the other day, and that's going to add 68 new units. And there's other things in the winds. Right now, if we just stop without any, proving any more development, it appears that in this decade, Batavia is going to add between eight and 900 new living units to our population. So that's something that I think is going to add quite a bit to our population, and, but it's, I go to some other places, I'm not going to name names, but there's some towns that are losing their population, and they may have lost eight or 900 people in the last year because people don't want to live there anymore, and they're afraid of what's going on and everything else. But we seem to, to the appreciation of this city council, we seem to be doing the right things at the right time and have a lot of people wanting to join us here. So I think that's a good place to be. And I've had people say, gee, you're going to have to stop growing here pretty quick because of, there's not going to be any more land left. And that, there's probably something to be said about that. But as you all know, our friends at the Kane County Forest Reserve out there at McKee, at Main Street and Nelson's Lake Road have now acquired 1,641 acres for a forest preserve. They've bought, I don't know, six or seven farms out there. And it's going to be a few years before that all unfolds, but that probably will be the largest forest preserve in Kane County, will be just west of Batavia and south of Fabian Parkway, going down in, almost into Aurora. So I had some Aurora officials call me today and want to know if they could come up and take a look at what's going on up here, because they think some of what's happening here may impact them. So we'll have probably more to talk about. But this is a very interesting time in the history of Batavia that we've got all this going on, and... going on, and we shall see what we shall see, but we're a very popular place in the eyes of people that want to move into the Chicagoland area. All right, that's enough from me talking tonight. We need a motion to enter executive session for discussion of acquisition of property.
Motion.
Second. Move by Chansett, second by Wolf. Voice, or we'll call, we'll call the law.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Baraza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.